I'm getting more stand for charging. How do we do?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, unity, and peace.
Okay. Ready? Oh, okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Sir.
Any discussion on tonight's agenda? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carried.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the February 22 meeting. Sir.
All right, any discussion on those items? On that item? All right, on favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. So Regina submitted her board report with a video.
She was in the reverse?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, because she's got an introduction for her sister, so we have to go with that one.
There she is.
Oh, no.
Can't play, not good.
Uh-oh.
Not good.
Hey, everybody!
All right, Regina, wherever you are. Bring it back.
She doesn't clap.
Yeah, I'm sure you miss me. It's only been a week. You can't miss me too much, but I mean, how could you not miss this? So, I'm going to start with our winter sports. The girls are playing right now downstairs in the gym. That's why I'm not here. I'm at my game. If we're on time, I'm going to say the game started about four minutes ago. Don't quote me on that. Seven o'clock game. It's probably around 7:04, 7:05. I know how we run things here. It's maybe on time. We'll see. So, we're playing right now. Our team is currently, like as in before tonight's game, five and two. We're doing pretty well, I'd say. Our next boys' basketball game is tomorrow at 7:30 in Calmum. They are also currently five and two. And then our hockey team, they also have a game tomorrow night at 6:30 at Bill Gray's, which is our home ice rink. Hockey lingo, guys. Ice rink. Our home ice rink at this point is Bill Gray's. So they play tomorrow at 6:30. Our fall two sports started today. That's football and volleyball. I'm going to predict the future here. It's Sunday night. I will be going to volleyball practice before the game. Well, I went to volleyball practice before the game. And I'm going to say that coaches worked us hard, but it was a great first day of practice. That is my predicting the future. I'm being positive here. Two sports right now and the show. I might go nuts, but I'm going to be positive. Yes, so football and volleyball started today. I'm hoping everything went well. The high school athletics team finished their season in first place with another great win during our February meet. We beat Livonia. That's all I have to say. That was like goal. The highest goal. Beat Livonia. First place was just a bonus. So congratulations to our athletics team. My last update for you tonight, again, only been a week, very short. My last update for you was on Drama Club. As you may have seen on various social medias, we posted our, as we call it, the plea for advocacy for the fine arts, getting our live performances back. It was on Facebook. It was on Twitter. I posted it on the Instagram page. It has been shared. It has been viewed like thousands of times already as of Sunday at 8:27 PM. It's like 4,000 views on our Facebook page. Assemblywoman Burns shared it on Facebook. I think that's the word. I know it's retweeted for Twitter. I'm going to say it's shared for Facebook. The school has shared it, so if you haven't seen it, it's on the school Facebook page. Probably on the Twitter page at this point. Yeah, yes. So, great video. We're trying to get our shows back, but as of right now, it looks like our show will only be streamed. So that will end up being streamed. It looks like it will be Friday through Sunday of what would have been Production Week. So it's March 26th through the 28th. What time, Regina? What time, board? Like, let's be real. So, it's going to be on demand, so you watch it when you can. It's kind of nice that way, actually. So, you can watch it anytime between Friday and Sunday. Don't ask me about tickets. It's still very up in the air. I can't answer all your questions. You want to direct those to Mrs. DeBelle. I don't have that much power here, just the secretary. So, March 26th through the 28th, Friday through Sunday, it's just streamed. It's not live. We're recording it. Shh, don't tell. It's being recorded. So, as per usual, I would ask if you had any questions. Normally you don't. You guys are good about that. I appreciate it. I really am very concerned if there are any questions. But, I can't answer your questions. So now I'm just going to hand the floor over to my sister, who's going to kill her middle school report. Have a good night!
Oh, my God.
Aw, thanks, Reg.
It's a tough thing to follow.
Yeah, could you please tell her that we enjoyed the recording?
Of course.
Even by recorded, that was awesome.
Of course. Well, we made it to March. There have been a lot of things happening in the middle school since I saw you last. For example, during the last week of January, some grade students participated in an interdisciplinary ELA and social studies activity. Students practiced their formal writing skills and their civic participation by writing thank you letters to the janitorial staff of the US Capitol Building, who had the daunting task of cleaning up following the January 6, 2021 riot. Students thanked them for their service and signed their letters with only their first names or the words "Adenastio students." Students had the option of having their letters mailed via GCS to the Capitol Building workers in Washington DC. Fifty-three of the seventh grade students chose to have their thank you letters mailed. We are so proud of our students for using their skills to reach out and encourage fellow Americans. Middle School Jazz Band has held five in-person after-school rehearsals since spring break. We all were successful, provided the chance to bring together our ensemble that had previously only rehearsed online while muted. We hope to be able to record a few of our tunes to share with the public very soon. Our middle school show choir has released our Rock with you medley. It was wonderful to see how we could still sing and dance safely for our all-C party. A big thank you to senior Jacob French for helping us combine the cohorts and make this possible. A big congratulations goes out to our middle school ACV team. We have won our first two meets. We have one tomorrow, and the finals are on Wednesday for the top two teams. Mr. Andunutu just posted a challenge with the members of Middle School Photo Club titled "Light." The directions are on, are to take an interesting photo of light, including lamps, sun, computer glow, et cetera, with advice to contract. This is a great creative outlet for students right now. I really cannot wait to see the results. Modified sports have begun, and the modified boys' basketball team has played several games and ended their season yesterday, along with modified wrestling. Girls' modified basketball will be starting on March 6th. I'm really looking forward to be back in the gym. And our latest news, at 6:46 tonight, the girls' JV basketball team with five of our eighth graders won the guest come on 32 to 24. Any questions?
Congratulations. Well done. Very nice.
Thank you.
And you are so right. We made it to March. That is a celebration. That is a celebration. Hold on.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
You looked great on the jazz, or the show choir.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Except for, there's no pressure following those acts, you know? I mean, I hope your presentation can live up to that.
I wish it was more entertaining. Right. So... It's fun to start with this visual because I think the illustration is an incredible reminder about all the hard work that goes into success. And right now, we might have a different view of what success is in this educational landscape, but it doesn't mean that there isn't any less emotion or hard work or any of the things that you see under that iceberg. So, usually, you know, icebergs have two parts, what people see and what people don't see. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of people that have been doing a great job at making things run successfully, specifically in our CSE office. So earlier, Kathy Gray had left. She was one of the two secretaries in our office. Left us with just one secretary. And Jennifer Rubek has been doing a great job maintaining, trying to schedule meetings for CSE and CPSC, which is rather challenging because she's trying to juggle schedules with teachers and certainly parents. So, just, she's done a really nice job. And in addition, I've been in a meeting with that team, and Sarah McLean has helped out down there a little bit, so that's been nice. She's an instructional aide, has been chipping in, and same with Megan Holt's work, who wears many hats in our district, helping out various departments. So she also has taken on some new roles and probably has felt some of these things, and she's learning some new things. So, just wanted to take the time to recognize those individuals because they certainly make the outcome, which is making sure that those meetings run smoothly and that we're having them on time. They have done that, so I'm going to start out with that piece. Last time I shared this visual, and it's a reminder about the work that we do with curriculum instruction and assessment. This framework, again, I just always go back to it because it just reminds us that we're here supporting all students, all staff, as the responsibilities of, you know, how we deliver not only instruction academically, but also behaviorally. So, I just go back to this because a lot of the things that I'll just highlight fall under this umbrella, specifically on the professional development and curriculum design. So, we talked a number of times, and Kelly has mentioned the work that her team is doing at the elementary level in terms of the Next Gen Standards. Specifically, you've heard a lot in terms of the ELA and Math. That timeline did get adjusted due to, you know, what we faced in March. So, we have continued this work. Work that still needs to be done is looking how this looks at the high school level. But just recently, Kelly and I worked with school improvement at BoC's and did some vertical conversations with the elementary teachers in terms of math. Looking to do that also in English. So, that work continues as we look at those standards, which, you know, are the requirements, the knowledge and skills that New York State puts out that students need to know and be able to do. This isn't only an ELA and Math. We have some new standards coming out in arts that will need to be implemented in 2021. Also in PE in the next couple of years. And computer science and digital fluency will also be something that's up and coming. So, and science as well. So, those assessments will also be changing. So, just an update on some of the things that are up and coming because these standards do impact what we do in terms of our curriculum and instruction. In terms of professional learning, earlier this year, you reviewed and approved our professional learning plan. And in that plan, there were three specific areas that we were focusing on in terms of our goals. Those were under the Next Gen Standards, which I just referenced, and also technology and diverse learners. So, some of the things that have been happening, that Professional Learning Committee, PDC, because we had our professional learning days earlier in this year really divided up and focused on those three areas that people had kind of mentioned were good focus areas. And the members of those committee, of that committee, decided to take on and end up facilitating some continuing professional learning opportunities for our staff, A12. So one of the areas was culturally responsive teaching, which also dovetails into some of the work that's happening at the high school with one of the focus areas. That group started off with a conversation with probably about 17 people, and that has expanded. Their topics are about white privilege and implicit bias. It's their next up and coming topic. So they have about five scheduled meetings to kind of talk about some of those things. In addition to a book study that's happening with some of those same numbers. Lended Learning also was a topic that this year several people wanted to jump into. So, we have two different sessions that are happening. People are doing that learning on their own and then coming together and sharing some of the things they have learned. And Erin Wine Gardner and Julia Lor are leading that group. And I'm sorry, I should have mentioned Charlie Presserel and Tara Devay are leading that first group. So these are my members of that committee. And the last group, Social Emotional Learning, specifically, we focus on restorative justice. We've been working with the Center for Dispute Settlements. They have been working with our focus groups, but then also offering some opportunities, again, A12, for people to participate in understanding academic circles and engaging in some of, like, the practice, not just learning it, but engaging in that. So that has happened continuously. So the nice thing, again, when you talk about professional learning, it's job embedded, it's continuous. It's something that people can keep coming back to. It's not something they learn once and then it's kind of done. And that was really our focus this year as a committee. So, just wanted to highlight the great work that's happening with those teams. So, when I think about all this, some of the other things, you know, people will say, you know, crisis is an opportunity. So what have we learned so far and what are some things that we're still capitalizing? When we started the school year, we identified that our students that had IEPs or had additional services, it would be beneficial for them to attend four days and because they had some unique needs and services that were required by the state. One of the things we implemented last week was bringing back some of our elementary students, those that are in, have a more restrictive environment because we recognize really trying to continue to support them and continuing to see how we can utilize Wednesdays to support some of our students. We continue to, like I said, learn. We've had great participation with our CSE and CPSC meetings with parents joining remotely, so I think that's something we've learned and we will continue beyond COVID, I guess. Something that we've learned, it's really increased participation and really been able to be more flexible with supporting families. And like I said, we continue going back to that diagram at the beginning about the iceberg. We still have a lot of work to do. We're still in that perseverance and working hard through our tiers of support and making sure that we're evaluating and updating our process for responding to intervention and supporting students that have needs and how we use our data. The other thing I just wanted to highlight was, one of the things that, why some of these things are happening or how we're able to fund some of these things are through our grants, our title grants. So without getting into a ton of detail, we do have money that comes in. And for Title I, we dedicated a lot of those funds to support our staff. So, a lot of that goes to our AIS, so reading providers at the elementary level or teaching assistants. We also have to support those learners that are at the jails, so that's the part B of Title I. We have some funds that come in and helps educate those young adults, I guess, that are there. Our Title II funds, we put towards our mentors, so that's how we pay for our mentor stipends so that we have mentors to support our new teachers. Title III supports our English language learners. So, we have funds, I had mentioned, I think, at one point about our PROGRIL, which is a service that we have used this year to communicate with families that speak other languages. So we're able to have that and support that through that grant. We're also looking to support our families and how to better use technology and how to communicate with them through some of the funds from Title III. And the last one, I had mentioned, the Center for Dispute Settlements. And we have done some I-ready training, and some of those funds come out of Title IV. So, sometimes when we talk about different people coming in or supporting our staff, I think it's important just to know sometimes where that money comes from and how we're able to fund that. And hopefully that is always aligning to what our focus is or our initiatives are as a district. So each year, how we decide how that money goes, there's a group of people, we discuss what are our needs and how can we best utilize those funds to support what we need to do. The last thing I just wanted to highlight, New York State, we have a report card that's probably familiar more to teachers or administrators. New York State came out with a parent dashboard, so I just wanted to share that publicly. Again, just a way for parents to have more updated information about enrollment in different districts, the graduation rates, and I don't know if they'll be expanding that, but it is part of the New York State website. I have linked it in the presentation. That is what I have for any questions? Great.
Good stuff. So, maybe if you can just follow up by email or something, but I'd be interested to hear a little bit about how the standards are changing, the ELA and Math, what that does, what the impact on us is, you know?
Yeah.
From a budget carrying perspective.
Yeah.
And I'd also be interested to learn a little bit more about the cultural response of teaching.
Okay. Yeah.
You know, certainly the presentation really highlighted all the work that administrative team is doing. And the teachers continue to not only meet the needs of our students daily, you know, between the hybrid model and in-person learning, but they also continue to professionally drive themselves to be better, to stay on top of what we need to. And just, you know, it's impressive to see the work that everyone's doing in such a non-typical year. And I just want to thank everyone for their efforts because it is amazing. Mr. Holt?
I think Stephanie and I actually updated the board at the same meeting also in Fall. So this is kind of a nice secondary checkpoint down throughout the year. Obviously, it's a challenging technology as far as, you know, how we started. But I just wanted to give a quick update on where we are with all the weekends. First three months of some infrastructure projects that were in the middle of. One is, we're looking to upgrade the fiber connection between our wiring closets in the building. There's basically four main wiring closets, three of which connect back to the main one back here. It's the original fiber from our original wiring project. It's still working, but it's aged at a point where we need to start opening up, upgrading that. They can be funded, so it's too late, which will give us, you know, a certain gate ratio. And we're currently reviewing folks, Ken, myself, and Alan are looking at the different folks that came back from that. That's a project we're hoping is going to happen over the summer. Continuing to look at the security of our campus, we currently have the cameras on the network, both inside the building and outside the building. We have on board right now 10 additional IP cameras that are going to be delivered within the next few weeks that will be installed. Because basically, the original cameras and all those analog cameras, we're looking to start, you know, placing them, kind of, with the last set, we have about 10 at a time that we're looking to implement. After this most recent upgrade that we do, we'll still need about 20 more on the network that we'll potentially have to recover. But all the cameras currently are working. You see a substantial difference between the IP cameras and the analog cameras. So, we've stretched that right out and we're getting close to having all the devices in the works. Lastly, Alan has been working hard at replacing existing hard drives from old desktops and laptops in the building to SSD drives, which obviously makes it almost like a new computer. It enhances them for a much faster, better response time in a lot more of the physical environment. So we're able to fund that out of our budget this year. About halfway through those replacements right now, and it's, we're still moving in that direction. Cindy sent out an email today to families and principals of community that this month, we're going to have a conference day. One of the components of that conference day, we're going to be doing some technology updates to staff. Data privacy, obviously, is the forefront of that going tonight right now, and that rocks even as far as privacy issues. When you look at current events, you think about how the vector schools, you know, over the last month, it puts in the forefront of people's minds, all leaving on fraudulent unemployment claims that have come through. People can go to tournaments as much as they want, but until something like that happens, where they literally have to totally scroll down because brands alone didn't have access to their own network. Every district's been reaching out to vector, trying to get more details as far as what did happen. So, we're going to share some things out with our faculty definitely to hopefully, you know, make sure people are using the best practices that are to protect their network. That being said, we have a ton of new subscriptions that we use this year. People that look for digital content, we want to review those policies. There are candidates right to start funding a lot of those subscriptions that were traditionally funded through our local software funds out of SAA, so we go through those, so we get that feedback on them. And when we do fund it in that way, they're automatically that law to find, you know, so we don't have to have that third party agreement with the vendor as far as how that data privacy works. So that helps as well. We'll want to review those just to get for the faculty as well. Lastly, we want to talk about the logistics of student device returns at the end of this school year. This is going to be the first time that we've had to pull all these devices back. So, I want to talk to the faculty about, you know, what they think is the best practice for that, the best way to make that happen. Because both the teachers and the students are going to want those devices as licensed and as they possibly can with the same recovery, performance instruction, but we're going to have to have procedures and guidelines for getting those devices back. That being said, just the last slide, it is more of a checkpoint statistics as far as what we're looking at. A year ago today, we had zero Chromebooks that were out in the field issued to families. Right now, we have 631 Chromebooks that are issued to students. So about 200 of our students are using their own personal devices. But obviously, when you have that many devices out there, there's going to be more repairs that come in. We have 94 students that are using district-related mobile hotspots to access their Wi-Fi. That doesn't mean 94, you mean access points. It means some families maybe have two or three kids in their house. We started always with one access point for them, so I think there's like 70 actual devices that are, you know, that have that exact number. But it's been a huge help as far as connecting our families, you know, back in the school on those local streets. So, in those... So, when you think of it, 631 devices that are out in the field, since then, we've had to put in 70 repair tickets, give or take a couple, that have been a service for things that we could repair and house. A lot of times, they come into our help desk, the panel or myself or any of the other people that are helping us out, and we'll do some basic troubleshooting with them. But when it comes to, okay, the device was dropped, it was a cracked screen or something that we didn't have to handle here, we put them into our OCs, we're part of a, it's called an AV repair closer, the Juba. Honestly, they're not doing much AV repair anymore. It's almost all Chromebook, iPads, screens, that kind of thing. So, they work through, you know, that pile, and they help us out, you know, the time as far as waiting to get the pipes that are, that are not old as far as, you know, getting those devices back in. But we've been able to go save the devices out of the comment for service with a different device, replacement device system. So, there's very little downtime as far as what the students are hosting at home. That being said, we are considering for next school year, I wanted to bring it up here first, using a third party to help, you know, provide insurance for these. So, Safeware is a company that a lot of the areas, schools are using. Where basically how it works is, the district doesn't have to handle any of the money. Basically, they set up a portal for parents and families for the first two weeks of the school year. You set up an account with PayPal or whatever that case may be. Usually depending on the devices, they amount to about $25 that the families would put in. And that would cover every type of repair on cracked screen even, a full replacement value, which was stolen, just before the month later. So, what other districts have done that have a once-in-one program is they have parents signing a agreement. Okay, if anything comes back, they're saying, well, there's lost power supply or cracked screen, here's what the price would be. If you get this insurance, it will be fully covered outside of that. So, we're looking to have some way to have parents have a commitment so those, so the students are doing the best they can. I don't think most of them are going to come back. It's been intentional or anything like that. But we're having them back in front of the buses and everything, so we're just trying to understand some of our middle school and high school students' accidents will happen. So, this is something that we're looking at and do a webinar with the partner and a lot of other area districts that have used Safeware. So it's a good way to track those, of what devices are out there and to protect, you know, our investment because it's a sizable investment.
But in the last year, we haven't required that from parents at all, right? We've taken care of all that.
Exactly. You know, because we're part of that OCs closer, we can replace seven, we can get eight of those parts back. It's pretty reasonable. This company will only ensure devices that are inside three years old because, you know, on a Chromebook, the price point on them, that's about what they stretch them out to. We always look at about a five-year replacement plan on technology like that. But they are going to go quicker out there, hitting kids' hands, so we're going to have to, have to look at that. And that is, for me, if anyone has any questions about it. And that is, if anyone has any questions about it, I have a lot of different areas. I mean, what happened?
John, you've probably talked to your associates reference to the Victor issue. Do they have any idea of what went bad? And if they do, do you think we're as protected as we possibly can be?
I'll say this, David, it's still being investigated. FBI looked at it, Homeland Security looked at it. It's definitely some ransomware that was on their network. It was on their network for a substantial amount of time before they actually found it. They're a much bigger district than us. They have to back up a lot more. I keep saying that anyone's ballpark for something like that.
Right, right.
We have some pretty good things in place to protect from that. One of what we changed the way we do our, our backup, our data backup, so it's fully offsite right now. And when I was going through, you know, these types of questions with someone who was part of that Victor, someone was helping, is that that's, that's hands down the positive for you. And when you're only backing them locally, you're at a much bigger risk for doing that. I think Victor was doing a little bit of both. They had some online stories, but their network is so much bigger than ours. You know, for a scale though, if that, you know, if it happened, I think that the tough thing for them is it blocked them out of so many different pieces where they literally, what it sounded like in my website, they had their weekend, every single laptop, every single hard drive was on that site. So that's, that's pretty disruptive when you think, okay, every teacher has a laptop, we're going to take that back and like, help and stuff.
Right, right.
Yeah. So we will hear more about that.
Okay, all right. You'll keep us posted.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, I'm hearing, reading, seeing that sometimes this happens when somebody opens an email. Somebody opens something that's suspicious and then the ball game's over.
Well, and that's the thing. We start the year with different safe schools, types of trainings that cover a lot of different things. And that's one of the pieces, be careful looking at emails. But that's, it's almost a timely, you know, part of the year to have this conversation on that conference day because it is the forefront of the country.
Okay, thank you.
Especially now we're getting inundated with so many more emails and so many special offers, oh, try this product, help, what? Or, or sometimes not as careful as you should with those types of things.
Okay, thank you.
John, did we train everybody on just what David was bringing up?
So honestly, at the beginning of the school year, we have a, we covered a series of about eight or nine different training sessions. Two, one of which is malware, one of which is tablo. So they go through it. But we, Steph and I were talking about that conference day. It was like, sometimes when you have that conversation with the people, especially when there's a current event story.
Yeah.
It just happens. It puts it, it puts it a lot more, with a lot more, you know, than you have around and just sitting in the room.
Right.
So offline.
Offline, I've got a couple of thoughts because I spent some time in the defense industry, so I can give you a couple of thoughts. I have a question, but I also want to, I want to start with a thank you. And the thank you is to you or, and I want to say everybody who's involved in streaming of the events, whether it's sports or drama or whatever. And, and it, it really has brought many of us who can't get to all the other events for a variety of reasons. And I know there's a lot of work that goes on to that, to making that happen. So just a general thank you to all of, everybody who's involved in that, from the folks who are at the events, you know, with the devices to committing it into the system, so.
I appreciate you saying that. I have to pass that thanks on to Craig Bailey. I mean, he had worked for this for a while. Honestly, when you see the production that's coming out of the gyms like tonight, the hot cameras that are mounted there, that was installed about a year ago. The coach rooms, those more for games found, where they get, you know, dissect the games on how it works. We were just to the point where we were going to start live streaming it last year and the closure happened. So I'm going to kind of forest the issue this year. And I, I know when people were looking at some of the, you know, artificial attempts at it in the field this year, it's not ESPN looking at, you know what I mean? But for, for people to take that one device, their own hotspots down, iPad, being able to, to, to stream it. It was extremely beneficial for our community and, and for the, you know, people that were part of that team that did that. A lot of respect to that. So thanks for mentioning that.
So along those lines, as you're upgrading the fiber network, the fiber optics, is that going to extend the range to the backfield?
The, the fiber project is only on the inside of the network. So we're trying to wire, our wired network together, all of our, our switches to our core switch, which is in this part of it. We talked about extending our wireless network outside further, which would definitely enhance it. One spot that we definitely want to look at, we have one little hotspot or an access point in that press booth, that could be enhanced in a, in a big way. We almost have nothing on the other end, like what, what, when baseball starts. So when we had originally gotten folks at the beginning of the year, we had talked about, we really want to do this. And it was a sizable left at that time, but I think the more that we look at this and people see the value in that work. One of our games last week, we had, since it's been out there, we had like 850 views.
Exactly.
Never had that before. Twenty positive comments. But I think it shows that we are really connecting a lot to people, better to appreciate the more.
Yeah, it's growing.
Do you think we'll keep that even after COVID? Because that's another one of those things that I wonder about, you know, that came about kind of because we had COVID.
Streaming?
Yeah, but.
I can imagine that a lot of it.
I know. I mean, it's kind of like, it's kind of like being able to zoom into meetings. I mean, you can, once people can come in, that's great. They can come in, but if they still want to zoom, you should. You know, I mean, it just, it's more access. It's grandparents far away and other.
On behalf of all the grandparents on there.
Yeah, right. You know, grandparents that are snowboarding.
The address this is better, definitely that silver lining. People have, you know, let's start with some of the teachers have stretched themselves out huge. And being able to stand and deliver content to both people that are, I'm going to read the fiber temp around, and all over the community. I, I applaud this. A year ago when I started, I was going to spend a couple of weeks and everything, but some of the silver linings that have come from it. Streaming is absolutely one of those examples I think are good to start.
That's really great to hear you, both you speak to some, you know, what's going on, on, on that analogy of the iceberg component. All the things that are going on and how hard everyone, you know, every staff member for, for the success of all students, but to look at standards and teaching and learning, instruction, infrastructure. Thank you all so much. Great job. Appreciate it.
We're, we're going to take a run here in our general support budget this evening. Um, it's a little small. I tried to make it as big as I could. The general support budget of those 1,000 votes in our budget, there's not a lot of change here from one year to the next. We're not looking for a whole lot of changes. This here just shows you Board of Education, District First Office, our district meeting, what we do for our budget votes. And then what happens here in the Superintendent's Office. And you can see year over year, we're going to have a lot of thousand dollar increase in those three areas all, all together. Our next would be the Business Office and our Legal Services. I would point out that our, our legal services here are looking to jump a little bit, $20,000. We just, between the building projects and the hallway projects, we just require a little bit more, maybe a lot, a lot of it more of legal services to support those things. So we're looking to increase that a little bit. But again, in general, you can see these are not changing a whole lot here year over year, very consistent. In, in our, our general support, that's pretty much what we would expect. Our facilities area, you can see out of 1.2 million dollars, we're, we've been going up about $19,000 there year over year. Salaries are very consistent. Our, our subs over up here due COVID, we don't think that those sanitizing, some of those things are going away. So we built that into the budget to stay kind of where it's at. Our utilities are where they are. Just in, in regardless of, of what we have, we still have repairs and upkeep and those kinds of things that are, are continuing to happen. But again, we're going to buy a $9,000 increase on a 1.2 million dollar facilities budget. And then lastly, it's just your central services. This is printing and mailing, central data, insurances, school association dues, those kinds of things. You know, and those are totally unchanged. Those dues may go up a little bit once we actually get the bill and the invoices from, you know, like rural schools or his, but in the summer. But overall, we would expect those to travel a whole lot one way or the other. So in general, just that general support, services part is just going to stay pretty consistent year over year. We're just going to continue to go forward with that. A couple of weeks from now, we'll be bringing you the, for the entire board, our transportation budget and debt service. We've got tonight, the Audit Committee wants to give you a quick update on that. But the most important thing probably that, that we need to start talking about is I had file our tax gap. It was due by the first of March, like saying, like the Friday, and we do have a negative tax gap. And so what does that mean? That means either we take our levy down to meet our tax gap, or we go after a super majority. And what the Finance Committee has, has kind of decided to do is we're going to seek a super majority and go out above that tax levy level. It's just kind of the way that the, the dollar shook out with debt falling off. It's just, it's just an anomaly. It's a one-year event. We're not entirely certain what that levy looks like right now. Somewhere between 0 and 1%, I would say it's probably going to be closer to 1%. But we'll see, you know, over the course of the next six, seven, eight weeks where that ultimately shakes out. But we do want to start picking that word out that, that our tax gap is negative and we will be looking to get a super majority to pass our budget here. Again, we think an increase on our levy of 0.1% is very, very modest. We think that it's a very supportive line. So that's where we are with our tax. Is there questions that are, I mean, at that, with the tax cap piece? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
So there's not a lot to update you with, but just a week in between our two board meetings. But it's been brought up multiple times that March 24th, that we will have 87% of our entire staff vaccinated. And this is important for two reasons. One is once our staff is fully vaccinated and after two weeks of that second dose, they do not have to quarantine if they're exposed to a positive. So you'll remember back in October, November, one of our biggest concerns was being able to staff our classrooms when we had to quarantine so many staff members when they were exposed to a positive. So luckily that will take that piece out of the equation. And I do want to thank Livingston County Department of Health. They made a mission as soon as educators were eligible for the COVID vaccination. They worked hand in hand with the Livingston County Superintendents to make this happen. And just due to their efforts, by March 24th, 87% of our staff will be fully vaccinated. That's also important because you've probably heard that after the second shot, some people are experiencing side effects. And some side effects are keeping people from the ability to work that next day. So we have determined that March 25th will be an asynchronous learning day. You may remember last Monday, I was talking about whether or not it could be an emergency closing day. After talking to the school attorneys, it does not qualify as an emergency closing day. So it'll be an asynchronous learning day. We will have assignments posted for students online. There will be no live instruction. So we just want to make sure that if we have staff members that are unable to work that day and be in the building, that our students are still having that asynchronous learning, but we're also not in a position where we have unstaffed classrooms. And we were notified last week that the waiver that New York State had applied for with the federal government was denied. We are going to be administering in some format, the three through eight assessments and select regions exams. There's not a lot of clarification about this right now, so as we learn information, I will continue to update you. But we do know that in some shape or form, the three through eight assessments and select regions will be administered this year. So one of the things that has been talked about are the two concerning pieces of the budget. And one is the expense-driven aides being lumped into one service. And then also people have been talking about the, the STAR component. So this is the first time ever that STAR has been added to our state aid runs as a revenue. So just to give you a little bit of background of what, what STAR is. So prior to STAR, the school would establish what the tax bill was for the taxpayer. They would build a taxpayer, the taxpayer would pay it. It was fairly simple. Then we had STAR exemption, and that was where the school district would reduce the bill that they charged the taxpayer. The taxpayer would pay their employer bill and then New York State would reimburse us to the school district. Then there was the STAR credit. So the STAR credit was, we would go back to that original scenario where the bill, tax bill was a thousand dollars. We would tax our taxpayers a thousand dollars. They would pay it. And then the state would reimburse the taxpayer. And then that leads us to the current situation. So at this point, we don't have clarification and Ken and I were trying to figure out why they said it's a reduction of $150, because there hasn't been clarification in regards to what that reduction will be. But in the proposed budget, they are reducing that, that STAR, STAR exemption reimbursement. And so what does that mean for Geneseo? Currently, our STAR payment is $789,000. So almost $800,000 is what our STAR payment is. And so this year, that is being supplanted by the federal funds, which still have not been approved. And next year, we are very concerned that, that federal money will not be there to, to make up that gap if the STAR payment for GCS is, is considered in our state aid runs as revenue. So definitely concerning. We don't know. And that's why as we were preparing the budget, it's so difficult. We don't, we don't actually know what our picture looks like in regards to revenues at this point because of these, these different pieces that have been added to, to the budget with very little to no explanation.
Can you go back a slide?
I can.
This is the bottom. You kind of hit it, but kind of went over for next year, federal money will cover the difference. But after that, it'll be up to district. So that was an important statement.
Yeah, absolutely. If, you know, going forward, if, if we have to make up $789,000 of our state aid remaining flat or other cuts because of the federal government not supplanting the, the budget next year, yes, it will be a very, very difficult budget year moving forward in 22, 23.
So that indicates all of 789,000 or half?
We're not sure. So the last slide says it's half of it.
Yes.
We're not sure because all the documentation that came with this never indicated why it was half. So we're not sure. Is it half? Is it, you know, is it almost 400,000? Is it 800,000? You know, we're not sure at this point, but hopefully it's, I don't know. I don't know. It just, it's interesting that it was added as a revenue because it, it shouldn't be thought of as a revenue. Any other questions?
What's your crystal ball say about these select regions that perhaps will give the, the history, American history regions, but we won't give the English regions or we won't give the Spanish three regions? I mean, I guess it's just a guess.
Yeah, and my crystal ball's cloudy on that one.
Why do they deny it?
See, what, what they're saying is they still want to see the accountability. They want to see what the true learning gaps have been due to COVID. They're not, so and their justification is that they're not going to utilize that for our accountability standards. Meaning if our students didn't do well on the examinations, it wouldn't put us in one of those categories of a school in need of improvement. But it would allow you to see what areas you need to address your, your curriculum and learning. Right. I think we can look at that other ways. We, I don't think we need a New York State assessment to, to figure that out.
Yeah. Do we have any more information about increasing days for high school yet?
So we're still working on, in my update that I sent out today, we're still working on bringing some of the eighth grade.
Right.
So we're hoping to have them back soon. That is our, our plan. And it's funny, we talked about this in the Finance Committee. Where it becomes very difficult is the transportation. And it's funny, we talked about this in the finance committee, where it becomes very difficult is it the transportation piece for nine through twelve, so. Our buses are 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 very close to capacity and bringing back our K eight um or at capacity, and so to do nine twelve, we would we would really need to think creatively.
Could we solve that, I mean, after this, that'd be a two bus run kind of thing, if that was.
So if we looked, it would be, if we looked at a split bus run, one of the things that we'd have to be very careful of is, when we started the school year, we looked at. What would be the potential of of changing our master's schedule? And mid-year, we can't change our master's schedule, so we would just need to be very thoughtful that if we did do a split run, that we we were able to. Really accommodate our our high school, middle school, high school schedule, um but then also do what's right for our for our K through five, so. Nothing is off the table, we're looking at everything, um but it 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 does become very challenging, if they would reduce. The six feet to three feet and allow us to put more people on the bus, um we would absolutely be able to do it with with little to no issues.
So one or one or both of those things have to happen.
Right.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, I know, one other thing, quick, are we guys talking about, I know it's still a little early, but we were here last year, uh graduation this year, I mean, I'm guessing soon, he's not gonna let us use probably the.
So we haven't had conversations yet, um it is something that's in the back of all of our minds about what what our options will be, what'll be allowed. Um, yeah, that's definitely a thought, but we haven't put any plans to that thought yet.
Okay. Might be in the parking lot again.
It could be in the parking lot again, it definitely could.
All right, thank you. Where are we at? Yes. All right, John. Audit Finance.
So we met again tonight, um, tonight, as you know, we're we're looking through the budget and the category by category, and tonight was. Been looking at the transportation and a little bit of debt service, but for the most part, no major um changes at this stage. Relatively similar year over year, and what we expect. There are a couple of things in terms of refinancing some bonds, paying off some bonds that we're working through as we get into the next year's budget. Um, as Ms. Flowers, she just mentioned the sports, the events, things like that certainly has an impact on our transportation. And as we work through, you know, whatever happens, we'll uh we'll know more about how to handle that in terms of events as well as students coming into school. We're hoping that the Albany budget will be on time, we'll see how that transpires. And uh, as as Ken, Ken and Mr. Porcher mentioned, we've got the tax gap, it's been filed, waiting to to get the final details. And then are gonna have another meeting on the next portion of the budget, uh just prior to the next quarter, on the fifteenth.
Uh, nothing on community engagement, the CEF same as always, policy committee is finally meeting tomorrow. Yay, so be there or be square, as they used to say. And then we'll, we we have what, we're policy tomorrow?
We have one policy, yes.
Okay, personnel.
Personnel, section nine point zero one, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items nine point zero two through nine point zero six.
Sir.
Any discussion on any of those items? All right, all in favor?
New businesses, item ten point zero one, I'd like to make a motion, we approve items ten point zero two through ten point zero six.
Oh, seven.
Seven, I'm sorry.
Sir.
All right, all in favor, or I'm sorry, any discussion on those items? Everybody got their questions answered on this one, right? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carried.
And uh, under the business office, which is eleven point zero one, I'd like to make a motion, we approve items eleven point zero two through eleven point zero six.
Sir.
Any questions, comments, or concern on those items for tonight? All right, all in favor? Hi, any opposed? All right, motion carried.
So need for a second or so?
No need for, no need for executive session this evening, so we're gonna get out of here before you do a slide.
Make a motion, will you, sir?
All right, all in favor of adjourning at uh, I don't know, about seven fifty-seven. All right, motion carried. See everybody in a couple weeks.